It's time for the City Council Candidate Forum on the No Coast Network.
So, let's get started. First up, we'll hear a statement from incumbent Doug Yates, who can make his way on up. Councilmember Yates is running unopposed in the 3rd Ward. He's running for his 3rd term on the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Yates and I'm running for reelection to the City Council in the 3rd Ward of Oskaloosa. I'd like to thank the Oskaloosa Herald, Penn Central Mall, KBOE, and KMZ In Radio for sponsoring this forum. I think this is a great opportunity for the citizens of our community to learn more about the candidates and thus allowing an informed decision on November 7th. My family and I have lived in Oskaloosa for a little over 10 years now. Julie and I have been married for 29 years and we have one son, Ryan, who is a junior at the Oskaloosa High School. I'm employed at Musco Sports Lighting as Vice President of Operations, having spent 20-plus years with the company. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Electrical and Computer Engineering from the University of Iowa. (Excuse me, got a little bit of cold.) I've had the privilege of serving the residents of the 3rd Ward for the past 8 years as their representative on the council. During that time, I've remained committed and consistent to the goal of being fiscally responsible while focusing on continued improvement of our road and utilities infrastructure, retention and growth of quality jobs in the area, and the advancement of strategic projects for the overall good of our community. My platform for the upcoming 4 years can be summed up in 3 words: Stay the course. We've seen numerous positive accomplishments over the past 8 years. Improving roads has been and will remain a priority for me. In addition, we've started to make significant strides forward with the repair and improvement of our underground utilities infrastructure, but much work and many projects remain. It is imperative that we strategically prioritize these projects to achieve the most value for our city and the residents of the city. Further, the council has been focused on overall housing quality and availability in our city. I think in the upcoming years, we will see the improved quality of our rental housing as a result of the recently implemented rental inspection program. Also, we are evaluating potential development projects to address the clearly identified need for construction of additional single-family homes in Oskaloosa. And I'm certainly in support of doing all we can to improve our overall housing availability in the community. When we look at the projects, I'm very proud of the new addition to our fire station. I think that's a real gem for our community. And I'm committed to the continued development, design, and construction of the Early Childhood Recreation Center, Early Childhood Development Center, and the Recreation Center, the combined project. Very supportive of continuing the Regional Airport Project and a Northwest Bypass connecting Highway 63 and Highway 163. These projects are critically important to the retention and growth of quality jobs in Oskaloosa and the surrounding region. Again, I'll keep my statements brief. I know you want to hear from all the other candidates that are running against one another, but once again, I'd like to thank the Oskaloosa Herald, KBOE, KMZ In Radio, and Penn Central Mall for their sponsorship and participation in this forum this evening. I look forward to serving the voters of the 3rd Ward for another 4 years, working with the other council members and our mayor to create a vision for our future and continuing to cooperate with all the sectors of our community for the betterment of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates. Next, I'll invite Diane Odison up to the mic. Mrs. Odison, you have 5 minutes, and this number is wrong, so I will make that correction now.
Ready? Alright, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to you tonight. I am Diane Odison, and I've been a resident of the northwestern neighborhood of Oskaloosa for nearly 30 years now, so many of you already know me. I grew up in a small town just outside of Indianapolis, Indiana, something very similar to New Sharon. My husband John and I first came to Oskaloosa when he was invited to play basketball at William Penn as a junior transfer student. We enjoyed being part of this community and always felt welcome and comfortable here. When John graduated in 1984, we moved back to Indiana, and we were there for several years until he had the opportunity to come back to Penn and join the staff as part of the Alumni Relations and Development Office. Since returning to Oskaloosa, I've also completed a Bachelor's Degree at Penn, and I've been involved with many community organizations. As a volunteer, I served on the ISU Extension Council and also on the Board of Directors for Imagine the Possibilities, United Way, and FACE of Mahaska County, FACE's the Fine Arts and Cultural Events Group. In each of these positions, I worked with other volunteers and with the administrative staff in developing policies and overseeing budgets as well as building community relations. I've been a member of the Oskaloosa Quanus Club for 20 years and have served in leadership positions with that group as well. Being able to work with others to achieve goals, whether those are personal or community-based, has given me valuable experience in teamwork, communication, planning, and problem-solving that will provide a strong foundation for working with the City Council. My career experience includes serving as Executive Director of United Way of Mahaska County, as Coordinator of Child Care Resource and Referral Services at the ISU Extension Office, and as Director of Marketing and Communication at William Penn. I have also been a small business owner and consider that experience to be really helpful in understanding the challenges that our local businesses face. I was invited to share with you tonight my platform. Now, platform has a lot of different meanings and sometimes refers to highly-charged political views. We don't want to go there tonight, but it could also mean a plan or a design, or in the case of public office, the principles on which a person or a group of persons will stand. Well, my plan or design concerning the City Council is very simple: To do my utmost, to be well-informed on all sides of issues, to consider the best possible outcomes for our community, to be a good steward of community resources, including your tax dollars, and to be very thoughtful about how the decisions made by the council will impact individuals and families here in Oskaloosa. The principles I strive to operate on always are honesty and integrity, compassion and accountability, and simply doing what is right or best for all of us, both now and in the future. I know that I have much to learn in order to serve you well as a member of the City Council. Since making the decision to run, I've been doing my homework. I've been attending City Council meetings and talking with individuals who can help me become better informed on the issues that the city faces. People who know me know that I will work hard to do what's needed for our citizens and for our community. There have been a lot of visible improvements being made around town, things like the facade project that's restoring or repairing 16 of our downtown buildings. Many of our most-traveled streets have recently had significant improvements. We have a new and modernized fire station, and many dilapidated properties have been cleaned up or removed. But not everything that is being done is visible right away. In a quarterly update to the City Council just this week, there were more than 30 projects identified as in different stages of completion, in progress, or in the planning and funding stages. So, there's a lot going on kind of behind the scenes as well. We are a small rural community, but we are not standing still, and I want to help this city continue to move forward. So, for those of you who do not live in Oskaloosa's 1st Ward, you can't vote for me, but I will be serving you as well as part of the council. And for my fellow 1st Ward residents, the ballot on November 7th will only show my name as a candidate, but although there's not another name there, I hope that you'll vote anyway, and I would use that as a vote of encouragement or a message of encouragement to me, you know, as I take on this responsibility and also as a pledge to work with me and with the rest of the council. I look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Odison. Now, I'll invite the candidates for the at-large race up to the stage to take a seat. Go ahead and come on up. The format for the forum tonight will be 90 seconds for opening comments, followed by a 1-minute response to questions, then another 90 seconds for a closing statement. And if candidates criticize another candidate during the questioning, the criticized candidate will be allowed a 30-second response. The clock will be administered by Mike Gippel. He's standing in the back. Mike Gippel's standing in the back back here. When it's time, when 15 seconds remain, he'll put up this sign. And when your time is up, he'll flip the card to show time is up, and then he'll wave it if you still keep talking. Okay. The candidates have not seen the questions to be asked tonight. Instead, they've only been given a list of topics that the questions will cover. To start the opening comments, the incumbents will go first, and a coin flipped earlier showed that Councilmember Walling will start us off with a 90-second statement. And go ahead and flip your signs up as well.
Tom. Thank you, Aaron, for the introduction. And I want to thank you all for coming and taking your time to do this. It's important, and I appreciate it. I am Tom Walling. I'm married to Debbie Williams-Walling. We've been married 44 years. I've worked for Cunningham Incorporated for 45 years. I have a daughter that's out in East, works for General Dynamics, and I have a son, Charlie, that works for Musco. The Williams and the Walling family have been in Oskaloosa for many generations, and we love this town. I never left. I don't plan on leaving. And I've enjoyed the 8 years I've had. Working at Cunningham Incorporated as Senior Vice President, I've learned the commitment to sticking. I've learned how to budget. I've learned what it takes to generate jobs and payroll which makes a town run. So, I've always been an advocate of business. I'm an advocate for all of you, but business is what it's about. So, I support business wholeheartedly. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And now, Councilmember Scotty Moore.
Hi, I'm Scotty Moore. I have lived in Oskaloosa probably for 40 years. I graduated from the University of Iowa, then did a Masters at Drake. I taught in Oskaloosa School System for over 30 years, a long time. I'm married, have been married for 54 years. Hardest job I ever had. (Laughter) I have 3 sons. One of them has moved back to town. One's in Minneapolis, a lawyer, and one's in Kansas City, working for the Bank of America. I've had the pleasure to serve on the council for 8 years. I'd like the opportunity to be there for 4 more years to complete some projects that we've started. When I ran 8 years ago, I promised to be a good steward of your money. The city financially is in the best shape it's ever been in. We have a Moody AAA bond rating that's excellent. We are the envy of many towns around because of our financial situation. I promised to work on roads and the infrastructure. If you go out on the roads, you can see we've actively been working on that. I also promised to have a safe environment and to have amenities that would bring people into town as well as keep people here in town. I also said I wanted to clean up the community and make it visually attractive. I'm running out of time, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Scotty. Now, Charlie Comfort, you have 90 seconds for an opening statement.
Thank you, Aaron. Well, my name is Charlie Comfort, as the name tag does say. I've lived in Oskaloosa virtually all my life. Currently work at Community First Credit Union down at one of our Toma locations. I've chosen to run for the City Council because I believe the time is right now for new leaders to be serving the city of Oskaloosa. I think we are at a perfect opportunity where we can present a new vision and a new perspective on how to move the city forward. As some of you are aware, I had the opportunity of serving on the Oskaloosa School Board from 2011 to 2014. I think that experience gave me the experience and the knowledge necessary to jump into the City Council and effectively serve the citizens. I don't necessarily feel that there's any issues currently facing the city that only the current City Council can handle, or that only the current City Council can address what's coming down the pipeline in the next few years. I have a passion for my community. I want to do everything I can to make it the best that it can be. And I'm not going to make any promises up here tonight that I can't keep in the next few years. I don't really believe in giving everybody lip service. I think we hear enough of that in 2016 and what's coming up in 2018. I think tonight you're going to find that, you know, I generally agree with the direction the city of Oskaloosa is going, and I generally agree with some of the decisions some of our councilmembers have currently taken and the other candidates have taken. I think where you'll find I differ is my philosophy on how the city should move forward and how we should grow. I'm excited to be here tonight, and I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Now Wyatt Russell, 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Thank you all for coming out tonight, and thanks to everyone listening wherever you are. A special thanks to the Oskaloosa Herald for putting this forum together and to working with KBOE and MCG to get as much involvement as possible for this event. That right there, ladies and gentlemen, is what this community is all about: Reaching out and working towards a common goal. Everyone on the stage has a common goal, and that is to do the best possible things for the city. We may all vary on how to get there, but our differences are what makes this system work, albeit sometimes a little off-kilter at times, but hey, it's government after all. Oskaloosa's a great place, it truly is, but do we have room for improvement? Absolutely. We need to look at our codes for our city. If it's not working, take it out or make it better. We need to look at making it easier to build or rebuild in our community while still maintaining a more consistent path for everyone to follow. We need to look at more new road reconstruction projects using concrete or asphalt only, no more seal coat. We need to look at the big picture. I'm talking about the picture that my 6, almost 7-year-old son can benefit from when he starts a family, which will be like when he's 50 years old. That my almost 2-year-old daughter can benefit from when she starts a family. We're talking when she's 90 years old, folks. We live day by day, but the decisions that made by the council have far more implications, and we really need to focus on just that. I'm not just saying that this council is going to go and make a decision tomorrow that could wreck our city. You guys don't plan on that, right? I don't want to be made a liar. Thanks.
Thank you, Wyatt. Now, we will start by asking questions, and the candidates will go in a random order in terms of answering those questions, starting with Walling, who won the coin toss earlier. Starting with budget priorities. The City Council meets each spring for a long meeting where City Councilors set the budget by considering capital projects and spending priorities. If elected, what priorities will you advocate for when it comes to how tax dollars are spent? Councilmember Walling.
Good question. Thank you. You'll learn when you're in this position that there are some things we have to do, some things we need to do, and some things we'd like to do. And it's pretty hard to get to the ones we like, but I think we've balanced that out. You know, we haven't bonded a lot for projects, but I think we may get to that. But the projects we need to continue are roads and the infrastructure. We have a large monetary goal, challenge, I guess is a better word, in our wastewater system and our water, but mainly in our wastewater. When I first started for Chuck Cunningham, we built the 2 wastewater plants, and they are old. And the EPA says they're outdated, and we have to fix them. You know, you're talking 35, 40 million dollars. So, you know, all the money's in the same pot, the way I say it, but we're going to have to do those things. And we're starting. You know, the sewers and water under our roads, they're 100 years old. The greatest generation, and we all love them and respect them, and they did a great job, and I'm part of what we're talking about. But for 100 years, this country has used up its resources in infrastructure. You know, for a long time when we tried to build the schools...
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Charlie Comfort, what priorities will you advocate for when it comes to how tax dollars are spent?
Well, I am appreciative of the city and continuing the infrastructure improvements, and most definitely. I think we need to continue with the 10-year road plan, continuing to have a revolving 10-year road plan, throwing money at major road construction projects. I think we need to, as Wyatt said, start stepping away from our seal coat projects and start looking more down the road with more serious, more permanent road construction projects. One thing that I am most concerned about budget priority-wise, I think we need to start looking at throwing some money towards updating our city's comprehensive plan. I believe the last plan on file was taken care of in 2000. I think we need to seriously look at putting some money towards, seriously looking at a plan that's going to put us more towards the future. Things have changed dramatically since 2000, and I think we need to start working off a more updated plan and stick to that plan. Another option, we just had the city, the fire department, go through with their fire station addition project, which looks absolutely great. I think there were some, a couple different pieces of that that the fire department still wanted to see done, such as possibly a hook-and-ladder truck. I think we need to look at when we start budgeting next year, seeing if we've met all of their needs, and see if there's anything additional such as a ladder truck that the fire department needs to continue to assist with our public safety and really get that facility completed.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. Now, Councilmember Moore, what priorities will you advocate for when it comes to how tax dollars are spent?
Well, we need for these meetings, they're long and intensive, because we have a lot of needs and a lot of demands on the dollars we have. So, we try and figure out the best way to spend that dollar. And as Tom has said, we've worked hard on roads. We have a long way to go on roads, so we'll have to continue our plan and parse out our money. The other thing is our infrastructure. There's no way to get around it. We have requirements by the DNR to get our INI up to speed, so we'll have to have some money there. We also want to offer, like the rec center, that loss sales tax that just passed, 75 cents of that is going to go to a new rec center. We want to make sure we build a rec center that is self-sustaining, that will financially fund itself, and that the taxpayers will not be paying for. We also want to make sure that the other 25 cents goes toward the roads in the best manner possible. So, I would say what I would like to do and what I've done each time we come is see where our needs are and where we can send that dollar out.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now Wyatt Russell, what priorities will you advocate for when it comes to how tax dollars are spent?
We absolutely have to focus on our infrastructure. Like Mr. Walling said, it is 100 years old. We have oak plugs in our sewer system that are rotting out, so we're seeing sinkholes off of that aspect of it. And like you said, the DNR and the EPA are really coming down on us. We really have to throw some good money at that one. We need to look at complete road reconstruction. All the infrastructure underneath that has to be replaced whenever we do a road, not going back in the next year and tearing the road back up because, oh, we forgot something. That's got to end. I'd like to look at a new plan for building incentives. Currently, the plans that we have in Oskaloosa, if you want to build a subdivision in Oskaloosa, you're on the hook for everything. You have to build the road. You have to lay all the water infrastructure, all the sewer infrastructure, but you have to do it to our specifications. But hey, we're nice enough that once you spend all that money on the engineering and installation, we'll take it from you when it's done, and then we'll charge you to use it. I think there needs to be some sort of an incentive to spur new development for subdivisions. How that is, not 100% sure on whether or not we want to look at, you know, a cost-sharing for the engineering, or if we just give a lump sum for whatever project we're going to go at. Charlie touched on the comp plan. I agree, we need a new one. We really need to focus on using the one we currently have adopted.
Thank you, Wyatt. These next questions, you'll have 1 minute to answer. 1 minute going forward. On roads, some of you mentioned roads. The council often discusses road repairs, which are limited mainly by the amount of available funding. Nevertheless, councilmembers can influence the city's road repair schedule, so what roads do you believe should be prioritized for repairs? Or put another way, what roads do you believe should be repaired next? And we'll start with Mr. Russell.
I had the privilege of working with our city engineer for 2 and 1/2 years. He was my immediate supervisor when I worked for the city. He is a wonderful engineer. As far as what roads to prioritize, I know everyone, you know, wants to see this road and that road. Really, it just needs to go back down to the traffic counts on our roads. The more heavily-used roads take priority first. Then we move, we get those fixed, then we move on, and we just keep going down the list until we get them all fixed. But we've got to start off the ones that get 10,000 cars a day versus the one that gets 20 cars a day. My road is junk. I will be the first person to tell you that, but I don't expect my road to be fixed. There's 10 houses on my road. I live on a dead-end road. I expect roads like 3rd Avenue, which was replaced, to get done. I want to see the rest of South 7th get replaced, the roads that are heavily-traveled in our areas.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Councilmember Moore, what roads do you think should be repaired next?
A number of years ago, we had a road study. We brought in a piece of heavy equipment that went over our roads and raided them. They'd either failed, or they were in poor condition, or they were okay. And that's the way we prioritize. The roads that had failed, we just let them set. The roads that needed improvement, that could be saved, we started to work on those. And the roads that needed totally replaced, we went with those. And we already have that priority in order, and I would continue to chip away at the roads that we can improve and that we need to improve.
Mr. Comfort, what roads do you think should be prioritized next?
I, as a, if I'm elected to the City Council, I will not advocate for this road or that road because it's my personal preference. As has been stated, we need to look at the roads that are most heavily-traveled. One that comes to mind is South D. We got to finish South 7th. We got to work out the 10-year road plan until we have to start, though. We got to start with the roads that are the most heavily-traveled. I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Oskaloosa, as a City Council member, to pick and choose a road that I think personally needs to go above other roads that may need it more. I'd say just start with the roads that are the most heavily-traveled and work out from there.
Thank you. Moving on to economic development, what are the barriers, if any, that you believe affect economic growth in the community? And if elected, how would you address them on City Council? And that comfort, or that question, rather, will go to Mr. Comfort first.
We have a lot of economic development projects going on in this community right now. We have the Northwest Bypass, which was just approved by the, which had the environmental assessment project go through. We have the Regional Airport Project going on. We have the Wind Farm in northern Mahaska County. That being said, I think there is a huge issue with small business development in Oskaloosa, and where does it come from? In my opinion, it's regulations and code in the city of Oskaloosa. I serve on the Osko Supportive Adjustment. We had a meeting last week to look at a variance for a gentleman who was looking at building, renovating the Wiggs Building. The current city of Oskaloosa Code was going to require him to build 44 parking spots in there. It's a no-brainer. We granted the variance. We have to look at the regulations and codes we have now, and we have to use common sense when enforcing those. We are killing development if we're going to be using nonsense codes on local economic development. We are regulating ourselves out of existence, and unfortunately, many developers will not do business in Oskaloosa anymore because of some of the projects and codes we must enforce.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. And Mr. Walling, I apologize. I believe I missed you. Would you like an opportunity to answer the question about roads and priorities?
Yeah, Aaron, thank you. Scotty touched on this vehicle that Iowa State University brought in some years ago, and they surveyed all the roads in Oskaloosa. It was pretty amazing, and it gave us a really good view from the base up. And Keelysh and Michael and all the staff did a very good job. They took all that information, and then they showed it to us. And the bottom line was this. I remember the day the city manager said, you know, "Here's what we need to do, but your constituents aren't going to like it because some people are going to get the wrong answer." Diane Odison can tell you the wrong answer. She's got terrible roads in a fairly new development, but as everybody has talked about, road count. But the thing you got to understand, it's a very fine balance of what you do. We've elected to do some roads, and we knew we didn't have all the infrastructure under it. Now, that sounds stupid. It is stupid, but if we didn't do it, we wouldn't have any roads. If you want new roads from the ground up, which means storm, water, and sewer, base, and roadbed, we'd get about 10 blocks a year paved, and there's nobody going to live that long, guys, to see, you know, something happen. So, we're making very good decisions on what to do, when to do it, and how to do it. And I think what you're seeing and driving on, you know that. And I got to quit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Going back to economic development, Charlie, thank you for your answer. Now, we'll go to Councilmember Moore.
And the question was...
The question was, what are the barriers, if any, that you believe affect economic growth in the community? And if elected, what would you do to address them on City Council?
Alright, so economic development is what you're asking me about. And what I would like to say is that we've tried to make our community friendly to the businesses that are here. We've had, if you go out to Oskaloosa Foods, or Pepsi-Cola, or Orton Musco, or Cloud, you can see how these businesses have expanded. can see how these businesses have expanded. We've tried to bring in some new economic opportunities. I'm really pleased with the fact that we've brought in millions of dollars with block grants and grant money that have helped us move forward in various areas. Economic development, go downtown, look at the facade program that's going on that's mainly been funded by, well, Councilman Walling will say it is your tax dollar, but it's a tax dollar that the people in Des Moines and council bluffs are sharing with us because it's money coming from out of our community. So, these are some things we've tried to do. Ran out of time.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now to Mr. Russell.
I touched on it when I was talking about the budget aspect of it. The economic development aspect that we are hindering is through our codes, like Mr. Comfort said. We need to take a really close look. Our municipal code, it's a cookie cutter code. We bought it. There's a lot of personalized stuff in it for our community, but there are a lot of contradicting codes within our municipal code, and that is really frustrating for any developer in our community. When I was building official, I would always tell people, give me a chance to go through the code, because if I have to make a knee-jerk reaction, I have to go for the most obvious code that's right in front of me. But our code is based off of the exceptions, not the rules. For every rule, there's usually about 10 exceptions that'll make a project work, but you have to give us time to work through it. But we need to go through that code and take the exceptions out and just make the rule more simple.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Mr. Walling, what do you believe affects economic growth in the community, and how would you address that on city council?
Well, we've all talked about it a lot tonight, and making the town look good to people when they come. If you've ever had to take people around town, you're trying to hire and show them a town, it makes a big, it makes a big impression on them. I can remember we're taking young techs around. They always either had a baby coming or they had little kids, and you had to show them the grade schools. We used to go to Whittier first. Most people here know why. It was only new building. You know, the story was in Grant Webster, my grandfather went to those buildings. They were 100 years old, but we've improved that. The town looks good, and we need to continue that because that's what keeps business going, and business will, will drive economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Moving to public safety, what do you believe should be a priority for the police department as it pertains to a safer community? And we'll have Councilmember Moore answer that question first.
Public safety, I think, involves not only the police department, but also the fire department. And we have built or added on a beautiful fire department, and in keeping with that, the fire department has taken on abating nuisance issues around town last year. As Diane alluded to, they have baited over 331 issues. The police department has gotten a police dog that's coming. I'm excited about that. They've gotten police cameras. We've hired some new staff. So, as far as public safety goes, I think we're standing quite well.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now, Mr. Russell, what do you believe should be a priority for the police department?
Our police department here is wonderful. I do believe that one of our priorities we need to shift is to our staffing. We have a really high rollover rate. We need to really focus and dig down on retention of our officers. We have a small community, and to have officers coming in all the time and all the time, you don't build that relationship with those officers. And I think if you have that chance to retain our employees, to build a relationship with our community, I think you'll see just wonderful, just engagement throughout our city and through our citizens. So, I would challenge anyone involved in that process to retain our current employees or figure out why we are not retaining our current employees.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Mr. Wall, Walling, what do you think should be a priority for the police department?
I think our police department does a great job. They know what they're doing. I don't know anything about keeping us safe. We do fund them, you know, their union and negotiate the wage. And little towns have this problem about their stepping stones. People come and they're going to move on. But I, on a whole, I think we've retained fairly well, and they're very courteous. And all I want to do is support them with whatever it takes to keep us safe. The, it's not fun being a policeman anymore. It probably never was fun being a policeman, and we've all seen it. But you have to support them wholeheartedly and give them every tool and every item that they need to do a good job. But I think they are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Now, Mr. Comfort, what do you believe should be a priority for the police department?
Very pleased with our police department as is right now. I am excited that we have, we were, that as a community fundraising effort, we were able to get the K-9 fundraising taken care of, and I'll be thrilled to have that coming next year. I think the big thing is law enforcement is an ever-changing environment, and I think the big thing is we need to stay on the cutting edge, be supportive of our police department. I think we need to continue to be in close contact with Jake McGee, our chief, and see what is changing, what we need to address. If there's any new tools, we need to look at providing towards them. It's a changing environment. We've just got to be supportive of our police department to stay on the cutting edge.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. And continuing on the topic of public safety, crime in particular, a question from the audience is that there's a belief that crime is happening in Oskaloosa, and it's on the rise due to low-income housing making it difficult, or easy, rather, for criminals to move into Oskaloosa. Starting with your comments and thoughts on that, Councilmember Walling.
I totally agree. You all know it's happening. You see it when you drive down the streets. And I think Jake and his crew, they're doing what they can for that, but you've got to look at some things, and this is really tough. The council, we usually get along pretty good, but they made me say it on TV one time. You have to watch who you're bringing in. The social services level in this town is too high, and they know it, and they come for it. And if you don't reduce it, and you couldn't give it away freebies, it's going to get worse. We have a bus system in town, and it's a good thing. My mother, if she was still here, would ride that bus, and it would get her to Walmart, the hospital. Those are all good things. We need to take care of our own. But if you put in transportation that's free and everybody learns about it, they're going to come here. You want businesses to come here, high-paying jobs, good-paying jobs, people raising families, and make the town great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Now, Mr. Comfort, your thoughts on how, on the correlation between low-income housing and increased crime?
I am not a law enforcement professional, so from that standpoint, there's a fine line, I think, between open and welcoming community and going a little overboard. I think it's, I think we all generally will agree that in the past couple of years, we've seen an increase in, a rise in some particular types of crime in this community. Whether or not there's, whether there's a correlation between the low-income housing here, I'd, I'm hesitant. I'm quite honestly hesitant to sit here and say that. No doubt, though, I think the, the low-income housing and freebie, and potential freebies that a community continues to hand out can certainly play a role in that. I absolutely agree that we need to be careful about that. I really don't want Oskaloosa to turn into, have a bad rap around the state. We don't right now. As I said in my previous answer, we've just got to continue to be supportive of our police department and open a welcoming community. There's a fine line between that, but we've got to really take a look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. Now, Mrs. Moore, your thoughts on the correlation between low-income housing and increased crime?
This is a fine line we're walking. As a council, we brought Ironwood into town. It brought $9 million of outside money into our community, and it improved a blighted area. So, it's kind of a balancing act. At the same time, Chief McGee has a program going where he's going into the housing developments and bringing information and asking our owners or operators to investigate the backgrounds of people they're renting to, and those tenants, as soon as they're going to be rented to, are aware they're going to be asked this, these questions. I think that will make a difference, too. So, it's a balancing act, and I want to provide the amenities that will grow our community. Tom's right, that new businesses is what grow our community, but I also want to provide housing for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now, Mr. Russell, your thoughts on the correlation between low-income housing and increased crime?
I'm real hesitant to say that there's a real strong correlation between those two. There, everyone needs affordable, quality housing, period. There might be people that can only afford $300 a month, but they are the hardest-working people you've ever met in your life. Are there other people that take advantage of the system? Absolutely, there really are. I don't think that it's fair to draw a stark line between low-income housing and crime. There might be some correlation there. I'm not an expert on that by any means. Like I said in my previous, I think a lot of that comes to the relationship that we can build with our police force and with our community. If we have the officers out talking to everyone, and we have that relationship built up with everyone, I think that'll help immensely. But we have to be supportive of all of our staff all the time, and that's kind of my thought on that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Moving on to, I'm sorry, Mr. Russell, moving on to quality of life and, and recreation. Oskaloosa has the Lacy Sports Complex, Edmondson Park, an outdoor pool, Oskaloosa Golf Courses, a recreation trail, a skate park, just to name a few. But what is your vision or ideas to further develop or improve the recreation amenities in Oskaloosa to enhance its residents' quality of life? And we'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Okay. MCRF is privately founded, funded, but it is a jewel in our community, and the council has supported it with some roads, and we're going to continue to support it. It brings in lots of tourism money. The new rec center will do the same, and as I've already said, I want to make sure we build a rec center. I think we've budgeted almost $20 million that's self-sustaining and that will fund itself. We've had the, the bike trails, we've got the disc golf course, we've got, I can't say how many holes of golf our town offers. We're getting ready to do some work out at Edmondson on the pool out there to update it. There's plenty of things going on around town when it comes to recreation and tourism.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now, Mr. Russell, your thoughts?
As, you know, like I said, I have a six-year-old son, I have a two-year-old daughter, and I'm guilty. I'll go to other communities to go do stuff. You know, I'll go to the Grinnell Pool, and my wife's gone to the Pella Pool and stuff like that. And I would love to stay local. And I think a lot of it is, we have to budget a little bit more towards our Parks and Recs Department. That department really struggles with money. Edmondson Park, the Wooden Playground, if you guys have ever been there lately, they try their best, but with the budget that they have, the thing's falling apart. Boards are broken, things are missing. We need to look at what we have, revamp what we have currently, and then look, you know, I think the rec center's going to be a great thing for our community. We need to look at that, embrace it, and then move on. I don't want to be a copycat of another community. We need to look at something that no one else around us has and create that for our community so we draw other people to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Mr. Comfort, your thoughts? Oh, did you already answer, Charlie? No, I would like to, what do you?
Okay. Trying to go in the order.
It'll be random.
I'm very, very, very proud of the recreation opportunities that we have here in the Oskaloosa community. The Lacy Complex is, in my opinion, the best recreation complex in southeast Iowa, and we should be, be very, very proud of that. Moving forward, if we want to enhance recreation, first of all, I do strongly support the early childhood and, early childhood and early recreation center, which will go out there at the Lacy Recreation Complex. That needs to go forward. The citizens of Oskaloosa voted over 60% in favor of local option sales tax dollars to go towards that. I think that's a mandate to go forward with that project on a reduced level considering the outcome with the unincorporated rural voters. That being said, we can't forget about Edmondson Park. Wyatt touched on it. Stop out at the Wooden Playground sometime. I think you're going to be surprised at the condition of that project. Earlier this year, I started to undertake a project, a community-driven project to try to renovate that project, that playground. If I'm elected to the council next year, no doubt, we need to start allocating more funds towards fixing of the playground and really continuing to throw money at our Parks and Recreation outside of Lacy.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. Now, Mr. Walling, your thoughts on Parks and Rec?
As far as the rec and daycare facility, I'm for it. Councilman Yates and I sit on the committee, and we've, we've met for a long time. You voted the money in a long time ago, but it takes a lot of hard work to get this figured out and do it right. The two premises have been, we want to build what you guys want, and we want to build what we can afford, and we've worked very hard at it. You know, we're talking about, spent a lot of money up here tonight, and there's still only so much money in the pot. So, you've got to make decisions, and these decisions are not fun, but they have to be made. But we'll work through the rec center, and we'll get it worked out. We've always had good amenities. You know, Edmondson Park, Councilman Yates was talking last night, he's got some ideas on the ball fields out there, and they're great. We, you know, we've got to work with what we have and work around it, but you can't afford everything. We're only 12,000 people.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. It's been mentioned that a couple of comments have been made about the new recreation center, which is, the development of it is ongoing. That's after voters showed their support last year by approving a one-cent sales tax to partially fund the construction of a new center. Once built, officials believe a new rec center will sustain itself on current and future memberships. But in the event that the center does not sustain itself and runs a deficit, do you believe local taxpayers should fund that deficit if that would occur? And in addition to that, and a question from the audience is, do you believe the evidence that there will be enough funding to make the new center sustainable? Mr. Comfort, you're first.
I'm going to reiterate my support for this project. Unfortunately, I did not live in Oskaloosa last year in that, but was taken. I did not get a chance to vote in that. I did contribute to the One Masque campaign. The question as to, should taxpayers fund the recreation center if it, if it does run a deficit? I do have concerns about taxpayers being, a project like that being thrown on the taxpayers' backs. I think right now, it is difficult to, we, none of us have a crystal ball. It is difficult to say it definitely is going to go under, it definitely is going to succeed. Right now, I definitely think we need to continue moving forward, though. Maybe we need to re, maybe we need to readdress those concerns with the funding and our financial consultants on that. But I mean, I would have, I would personally have concerns with throwing that on the backs of the taxpayers, but I do support this project, and I definitely think we still need to continue to move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. Mr. Walling, do you think that the city should fund a deficit, and do you trust the data that the center will be self-sustaining?
I trust the data we have. I'm not sure I agree that it sells, it's all self-sustaining. What they've said is, they can operate themselves, but, but the infrastructure part of that, building the building and doing the big items, changing out HVAC, that type of thing, it's probably going to fall on the city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walling. Mr. Russell, your thoughts on that?
Like I said, I fully support the rec center, and there are certain things that you take on as a city, what you call in business, as a lost leader. You know, does Edmondson Park make money? No. Do we have to put money into it to keep it up and going? Absolutely. Why do we do it? For the enjoyment of the citizens, period. So, I would hope that the people who are hopefully way smarter than me that compile that data, that said that it is self-supporting, that they're right. Things change. We don't know what's going to happen in 15 years. You know, the economy could tank, or it could be just amazing, and we could add on to the rec center. But at the end of the day, we have to look at, you know, one example is Edmondson Pool. I mean, I don't think a lot of people understand how much money the city spends to keep Edmondson Pool operational during the three months, and we do not break even on that by a long stretch. So, that's a lost leader. People enjoy it, and we have to fund it, and everyone funds it to enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mrs. Moore?
Okay, this is a complicated issue. I am for the rec center and the Early Childhood Development Center. I think it's imperative that we have good daycare in Oskaloosa. I've said many times, I drive over rutted streets to get my kids to good daycare if I was a newcomer to our community who had young children. I, like Tom, we're going to study this, we're going to proceed in as fiscally responsible way as we can, because I really don't think the city should have to fund this. Every time a child goes swimming at Edmondson Pool, it costs everyone setting here, but we still do it. So, to offer that to the community, and that probably might possibly be what happens with the rec center, but we're going to try our very... the rec center, but we're going to try our very level best not to let that happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Mr. Russell, the next question. Oskaloosa's rental inspection program began this year requiring rental properties to be inspected and for owners to meet certain quality standards. Do you support this program? And having seen it implemented thus far, are there changes to the program that you'd advocate for, if any?
When I was building official, this was coming up and I didn't get to see it through to fruition. I am absolutely for the rental inspection program. However, I'm not for it in the current form that it's in. I think it was maybe a little bit railroaded in just to get the policy in place. I think there could have been more done to get more buy-in from the landlords. You're probably not going to get more than 50% buy-in from the landlords. That's simple. People don't want people inspecting their houses. I get that, obviously. I've been called many names because of it. But what I would advocate for is going back through, talking to the landlords, seeing what's working and what's not working on this inspection checklist. I've had a couple of conversations and there seems to be confusion amongst the inspectors and our staff on what they are looking for and how they're looking for it. So I'd like to take another look at it. It needs to stay in place, but I think it could be modified to be better.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Mrs. Moore, your thoughts on this?
Okay, the rental inspection program, I voted for it, I supported it. That's one reason I really want to stay on the council for more years is I want to make sure it works. I am a landlord, I have a rental property. I want to make sure this is fair to our tenants, that they have a decent home to live in, but I want to make sure it's fair to our landlords as well. So on the rental inspection, I say, I want to stay on the council so if it isn't working, we can tweak it, improve it, or get rid of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now, Mr. Walling, do you support the program and is there anything that you would change about it?
Yes, I did vote for it and it is one of the topics that I decided about running the third term. I promised, if it doesn't work, if we don't see improvement, we'll get rid of it. But so, we're going to give it a chance. Wyatt mentioned it got pushed through a little bit. Actually, I know what he's referring to, but we backed it way off. There was three of us on the council that said, no, we're doing this too fast and we backed way down. We had lots of public meetings and then we went forward. It did get implemented awful fast, once it got there, but we've made it through that and I'm in support of landlords that are good. But, you know, we've got property in town and the thing of it is, we just had the statistics last night, 50% of the problems are owned and that doesn't affect that, but 50% of them are rentals, okay? So we're just trying to clean up the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Mr. Comfort, your thoughts?
I absolutely believe that renters should be able to live in a safe and clean environment. That being said, if I was on the council, I would not likely have voted for the program as is. I have concerns that the program was implemented a little too quickly. I think we should have done it in phases. I think, in my opinion, I think it's gone, it was done a little too heavy-handed. I think we should have started by looking at the city, I think, with the 5,000-plus codes we have and the International Building Code that the city operates on, I think we should have looked at that, got a little more buy-in from the landlords and moved in that direction. Like I said, at a minimum, this should have been implemented in phases, not done all at once. I guess I'm not necessarily of the belief that we should implement something, give it a try all at once and then if it's not working, we'll just repeal it. I guess I don't feel that's good government. I think there was a lot of landlords that felt a little burnt by this and perhaps more buy-in should have been sought on this, but again, I would not have supported that as is.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. The final question for this evening, so that we can continue moving along, is in regards to the airport. And this first question will go to Councilmembers Walling and Moore. Your record shows that you support the regional airport project, which has passed the environmental assessment and is moving forward with land acquisition. However, in light of the negative public sentiment, what are your reasons for believing the airport project is needed for Oskaloosa and the region? And we'll start with Mrs. Moore.
I totally support the airport. If you check into any of the information on it, you'll find out it's going to bring over $6 million into our community. It's going to be funded with outside dollars. 90% of it's going to be paid by the FAA. The other $3 million that the city needs to come up with will be from selling the airport that we already have. I feel this airport is imperative so we can move forward and continue to grow because we can offer something to bring other businesses in as well as to keep the businesses that we do have here. So I am in support of the regional airport. I could talk probably five, six minutes on this, but he's waving the 15-second flag at me.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Mr. Walling, what reasons do you have for believing the airport project is needed for Oskaloosa?
I have supported it for day one and you're tired of hearing me talk about business, but it's a business issue. But the important long-term goal, and it's for, everybody here's kids and grandkids. The state's going to go to 66 counties and maybe 33 and we're going to have centers. Our vision is for the corridor between Oskaloosa and Pella to be one of those centers. We want to end up on top when they divide this up and that regional airport is a big component of that. I've sat in meetings with 600 mad farmers and I understand them and I've told them, if you came knocked on my door and Debbie's door, we love our home, and said you're moving tomorrow, I would fight you with everything I could, but probably can't afford it. When they told us we had to have the war for all, to have intimate domain, to build an airport, or they wouldn't fund it, I said, yes, we will. I don't like intimate domain and I still think they'll probably pay double the rate of the acreages and hopefully that works, but the airport's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Now, for candidates Russell and Comfort. Do you believe the airport project should continue moving forward? If so, what are your reasons for why the airport is needed? Or if you think the project should be modified, what would you change? We'll start with Mr. Comfort.
I support the regional airport project. If you know me, I think that's pretty obvious over the past few years. My reasoning in supporting the airport project is I think we need to build amenities, regional airports, other economic development projects that support our business. I talked about we need to support small business, we also need to support our large business. There are several large businesses in this area that will benefit from this project and this has the ability, coupled with the other economic development projects going on, to bring in other economic, to bring in other industry. I think this community needs to move forward from what has happened. I think the people who support this airport, we need to get with those who oppose this airport. Jimmy, I see you're sitting right there. I said some stuff about, I myself have said some things about those who oppose the airport project. I see others. Jimmy, I apologize for stuff I've said. We need to move forward with what we've said about the people who are against this airport project. Put the leaf, put a palm leaf, palm branch out there. Land acquisition is going to begin. Let's move forward and do our best to get everyone on board with us.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. And finally, Mr. Russell, your thoughts on the airport project?
Couldn't you have picked a better question to end with? I mean, wow, come on. I support it. I believe in doing anything possible to move our community forward. Building amenities, man, I can't talk now, and any economic development growth potentials that we possibly have. Will this airport directly impact our businesses locally in Oskaloosa? Maybe not. Will it impact Pella? And I think that's a lot of the contention. It probably will impact Pella more than it will us. However, where do people in Pella work? You know, yeah, where do they work? They work in Pella. Where do they live? They live in Oski. You know, they live in Oski and Pella. So if we can maintain, you know, a relationship with our other communities that are around us, it's not just about us. If we can maintain that and help other businesses grow, help our businesses grow, that'll help our development and Oski sustain and/or grow, I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, we'll move on to closing comments and we will reverse the order that we had with the opening comments. So starting with Mr. Russell, you'll have 90 seconds for a closing statement. 90 seconds, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs, for being our moderator tonight. To the Herald, KBOE, and MCG. Like I said in my opening statement, every one up here is great and they have great intentions for this city. Hopefully, this forum has made some of our difference show up to you to become more informed on who you want to represent you because that is what this is all about, you. The council is here to represent the citizens to move our city forward in a positive manner. I ask for your vote to bring some fresh perspective to the council, but more importantly, I ask you to vote, period. This is a starting process to making your voices heard and if you want a different set of ears to listen to your concerns, check my name when you go to vote. Thank you all for coming out and to everyone listening and watching everywhere. I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your evening and please remember to vote and take a friend with you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, Mr. Comfort.
I'd like to thank Aaron for moderating this forum. Also want to thank the Herald, KBOE, KMZN, Penn Central Mall for coordinating the, this particular event. I also want to thank Ken, Oski News, for showing up to cover this as well. It's important that we have all of our media here to cover this event. And I want to thank all the four candidates for showing up as well. It's important to hear from all of us. You know, you the voters have now heard from the four at-large city council candidates and it's up to you on November 7th. I believe that we're at a prime rate opportunity right now to put in new blood, a new perspective, and a new vision in the city council. I believe strongly we need to reassess where we're sitting at and to start looking at why we aren't seeing significant growth and we need a sensible voice in the city council when it comes to city codes and regulation. I'm going to be a leader for all of you. I will listen to everybody. I intend to hold town halls in each of the four of Oskaloosa City Ward, just as former Mayor Tom Riley did when he was mayor of Oskaloosa. Anything I've said here tonight, you can take it to the bank. I stand by what I say, I mean what I say and I say what I mean and I will make my actions show for that. If you're absolutely pleased with the direction the city of Oskaloosa is heading right now and you don't believe we need any change, I understand I'm probably not going to get your vote. But if you're looking for a change, if you're looking for something different, if you're not necessarily pleased with the direction we're heading in, I'd like to talk to you and I'd like to get your support. Make sure you vote on November 7th and remember to vote for Comfort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comfort. Now, Mrs. Moore, your closing comments.
Again, I want to thank everyone who made this forum possible tonight and all the people who come out to listen to us. It's been an honor to be up here with the other three candidates, all of whom have a great vision for our community. It's also been an honor to serve you these last eight years. I'd like to have four more years to complete some things we've started. I asked you to go out and vote. I've tried to listen to people that have had concerns or questions. I've tried to make good decisions with the dollars that were available for us and I hope to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Now, Mr. Walling, your closing statement.
I'm running on my record that most of you are interested in the future of our town and watched on TV twice a month for eight years. If you agree with mostly what I've done, please vote for me again. If you don't, you won't. I've learned a lot about local government in my two terms. I have made some mistakes. I'm only human and I'm glad to tell you the mistakes. I've learned government resists being run like a private business because they have a lot of rules and regulations so you can't do it, but private business knows how to make a profit and they know what they're doing. But I'm always there to point it out. I've advocated for that the whole eight years. I do want to thank some people, that's always great. One, I'd like to thank Aaron Versteg for all his years on the council. He decided not to run. Diane, you're going to be a great asset to fill Aaron's spot. Wyatt and Charlie, I wish you the best. Future needs people. Appreciate the mall for the venue, appreciate all the media. I hope we've been entertaining for those of you who came. And you know what I tell everybody on, when they tell me, I saw you on TV the other night, you say the same thing every time, we've been doing it for eight years? Guess what? You got to see me, I can't see you and I can't hear you. Nobody comes to council meetings. It's amazing. Doug Yates and I sit together and we go, you know, we can have the smallest trivial thing and we can pack the house, but you talk about budget, there won't be anybody there to budget here and we meet two whole nights.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Appreciate your closing comments.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, that concludes this portion of the forum. Thank you, candidates, for your time this evening. Now, I'll ask the candidates for mayor to come up and as we do a little shuffling on the stage, I ask that you please show your appreciation for these candidates with a round Now, we'll move into a forum with the mayor candidates. The format for this forum will be two minutes for opening comments followed by 90-second responses to questions, then another 90 seconds for a closing statement. And if criticism is made toward the opposing candidate during questioning, the criticized candidate will be allowed a 30-second response. Similar to the at-large candidates, the candidates for mayor have not seen the questions to be asked and have only been given a list of topics that the questions will cover. To start the evening, a flip of the coin showed Mr. Kruetsvelt will go first. If we're all ready on stage here, go ahead and have a seat. And Mr. Kruetsvelt, you may begin your 90 seconds for an opening statement.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was a two-minute opening statement, so if I run a little long...
No, it is two.
It is two, okay. Again, thank you very much to the Oskaloosa Herald, KBOE Radio, KMZN, the No Coast Network, CRI, Penn Central Mall. There's a lot of folks involved with this. Benefit of being mayor is that you get to run for reelection every two years and the council members probably don't say that they wish they could. It's, it's both, okay, Doug Yates says he wishes he had every other year. My wife Jane and I, we've got four kids, they're all grown. One is living in the Des Moines area. We have two that are married, living in the Minneapolis area. And then we also have one married in the Cedar Rapids area, who has our only grandchild, Andrew, age two. I have a business background, working 20-plus years as a chief financial officer for Interpower Corporation and then I'm also the financial controller for Tassel Ridge Winery. I think I bring a unique combination of business and political experience to the mayoral position. Over the last few years, the mayor job has evolved. As we take on more initiatives, I've had to attend many more meetings. We're working with the school board to build the new adult recreation and early childhood learning center. We're doing a bypass around Oskaloosa to reduce the amount of truck traffic through our downtown. And the DNR has also made their visit to town, telling us we need to revamp the way that we handle water in our infrastructure. These are all big-dollar projects and the list goes on. It takes a lot of time. Even with our technology, I still spend between 10 and 20 hours per week and in public life, there's no days off. Every day you go out, there's somebody who wants to talk to you about it. I'm fortunate that my employer enables me to be away during the business day and so a lot of times I'll break away, do my thing and then come on back and get caught up on the weekend. And so, I want to finish by saying I sure appreciate my wife Jane. She sees me come home at odd hours, she cooks my meals at odd times and then listens to me vent about frustration and keeps me centered with the perspective. So I understand my time is up, so thank you very much. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kruetsvelt. Mr. Lorenzen, your two minutes, two minutes please for your opening comments.
Thanks, Dave. And I'm sure everybody here has been thanked a lot, but I want to thank you again for coming out. I'm also, I really want to thank the candidates that just spoke. Wow, I was very impressed. I think we're in good hands no matter what, can't go wrong there. And, you know, it takes a lot of heart and courage to put yourself out there in the public and very impressive. So I started teaching and coaching in Oskaloosa about 17 years ago. I've always had a love for government, that's why I teach. I've been teaching government for 17 years at the high school. I took every single political science class in high school and college that I could. I earned my bachelor's degree in history education with a minor in political science. While I was teaching here in Oskaloosa, I got my master's degree, so I was working full-time and doing that and had a family. I got my master's degree in education from Interpol University. I got married in 2002 to my lovely wife. Her name's Tammy and she works at our hospital right here in town. She is a PTA and, you know, chances are many of you have probably seen her there and she does a great job in the physical therapy department. We have three wonderful kids. My oldest is a fifth grader and then I have a third grader and a three-year-old, so I got two boys and a girl. When I'm not working or spending time with my family, I like to do just about anything active. I'm a very physical person. I like to work out, play basketball, play golf, darts, whatever it may be. I like to be involved, hiking, just doing something. One of the joys of being a teacher, I think this is the biggest joy, is that you get a chance to see people over the years. And I've been doing this long enough now. I've taught 2,500 students, and everywhere I go, I see people I know. I've been a public employee for a long time. And just the moderator tonight, the wonderful guy we have here, former student to the candidates, people in the audience, I feel like I have a strong connection to everybody, and this has always been a dream of mine, and something I've always wanted to do to represent our great town of Oskaloosa. It's been on my radar for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Oskaloosa's city code states that a duty of the mayor is to promote an act on behalf of the city at public events and when speaking with private and governmental organizations. So, what would your talking points be to promote Oskaloosa? How would you characterize Oskaloosa to a newcomer? And I believe, Mr. Cruttsfeld, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. You may go first.
Okay, thank you.
90 seconds.
I actually believe with the coin flip, it was Mr. Lorenzen who was going to take the first question.
You know what?
I'll defer if...
Let's go ahead and do that. Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Lorenzen, 90 seconds to respond.
So, I mean, we have a great town here. I don't need to tell anybody that, but we have a lot of things going for us with a great school system. I can definitely vouch for that. Great religious institutions. We are getting more and more, well, the quality of life's improving with the rec trail, the dog park. Obviously, the early childhood and recreation development center is going to be very important. That's something I talk about that's coming down the road. We have a great downtown area. I mean, it's awesome. The alley and the facade program, we take a lot of pride in our downtown area. Obviously, with Edison Park and all the facilities around with golf, we've got to be the only community that offers that much golf. We have all kinds of things going for us. And what I'm most impressed about Oskaloosa is the people here are about the nicest people that I've ever been around, and I think we have a very open, welcome community, a welcoming community, and I would definitely promote that we are just a good group of people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Mr. Cruttsfeld.
Yep, pretty much the same thing that Mr. Lorenzen was rattling off, that when I do have the conversations with people, talking about the environment that Oskaloosa brings, I like to bring them around to the town square, show them how we've got that laid out. I show them pictures of when we do the Christmas in July, when we do the Christmas parade itself, the painting with lights, you know, that I want to show Oskaloosa as being playful when we want to be, but serious as well, that we're making investments in our school system. We're making the investments in our infrastructure. We're doing things like getting gigabit internet service for the businesses to be able to be cutting-edge with their communications. And so, all of these work together. And then, yeah, I'll talk about the future, that this is a place where we vote to invest in ourselves. So, I'll talk about the, you know, the adult recreation center. I'll talk about how we are going to be proceeding with the bypass around Oskaloosa, trying to make Oskaloosa a comfortable, quaint place to be where you do your job, you work hard, but then you're able to relax in many different ways.
Thank you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. The next question for you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. How have you managed your responsibilities as mayor with your occupation, and do you foresee any situation that might impact the way you lead now?
I don't anticipate any major changes. The nature, and I touched on this in my opening comment, the mayor's job has gotten to be much more intense. The phrase that gets used from time to time is "running at the speed of business." And so, at my desk, we have a number of technologies that are at work. So, let's say you call City Hall. I want to talk to the mayor. Well, I don't sit in my office at City Hall, but what will happen is it will go to voicemail. That voicemail will drop into a sound file. That sound file will be emailed to my desk at Interpower, and then I can double-click on it and hear it within one minute. My goal, when I get phone calls like that, is to get them returned within 10 minutes. So, that way, the taxpayer or whoever's trying to get hold of me doesn't see that I'm actually not physically there. Now, from time to time, it happens, where I'll get the phone call that says, "Hey, we need you to come down to City Hall. What's your schedule like in the next hour? What's it like in the next two hours?" And I jump. So, this morning, for example, okay, yesterday was the city council meeting, and so we approved a bunch of stuff. Documents are only official once they're signed by the mayor. And so, the mayor, then, me, says, "Okay, I'll have them signed over the noon hour." You hop in the car, and you go and get it done. But I don't see any way or any need to change that in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. And Mr. Lorenzen, how do you intend to juggle the responsibilities of your occupation with the responsibilities of mayor?
You know, communication is important, and obviously, teachers specialize in that. That's what we do for a living. We communicate with students, we communicate with parents, and we're doing that all the time. And I would run my responsibility as a mayor, just like all the mayors across the nation. I mean, pretty much all mayors have a full-time job in the family, and I'm a professional, and I have been managing my life for my, well, the whole time, all the time. And I'm very organized, I'm in the moment. I think two things stand out. You have to be really organized, and teachers are in general. You have to have great communication to go along with that. And you've got to be in the moment. So, whether it's with your job, or your family, or your second job, you've got to be in that moment. Somebody's talking to you, you've got to be able to fully focus on them and give them your full heart and attention. I do feel like I have one advantage also. I mean, the fact that teachers are off for 90 straight days in the summer. So, for 90 straight days, I would be the most flexible person around, and the rest of time, I guarantee I can make it happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Next question to you, Mr. Lorenzen, as well. The mayor is a non-voting member on the city council, which means influence and leadership is often the mayor's most powerful asset. What has been your experience with leading others, and what technique will you employ to create a united council?
Well, be a good leader. You have to be a good listener. You have to be prepared, you have to be knowledgeable. And educator, I mean, leadership is what we do daily. That's part of our job, that's our living. I mean, I'm a leader of 25 students six times a day, 150 students total. That's what I do. They have to be able to buy into me, they have to be able to trust me, they have to follow me. And not only that, as a leader of a group of people in that regards, PLCs is a big part of education. I'm sure many people in here know about that. It's a professional learning community. And in PLCs, we basically, we constantly get together as professionals and look at ways that we can improve our practice, address specific concerns that might be, depends on what committee we're on. Often, we're on two or three different committees at a time. That's what teachers do. Not only do we have meetings all the time and then lead the classroom, but we have opportunities to be a leader within those committees, and I've done that many times on various committees over the years. On top of that, I've represented our union with negotiations for quite a few years. I've been one of the lead people in that regard, and it's just a natural thing that teachers do. I mean, that's, we're leaders all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Mr. Cruttsfeld, how have you influenced city council members, and what is your approach to creating cohesiveness within the council?
Well, Mr. Lorenzen touched on it, that it starts off with listening, that each of the members of our city council have individual personalities, individual philosophies. And over the last eight years, I've been working very hard to make sure I understand where they're coming from. And so, as ideas get promoted, the ideas, coming up with where are those compromises at, that is probably what I consider to be my strongest leadership trait. Now, there are other ideas out there, though. And so, as mayor, there are various opportunities that we have to rub shoulders with other mayors. And so, there's a mid-sized cities group, and then there's also a smaller cities group, meetings that take place in Newton, Grinnell, also in Johnston, Coralville. And while we're having those meetings, it's an opportunity for me to talk with other mayors about the challenges that are facing their cities, and then also get a sense of, is it coming in the direction of Oskaloosa? If so, then communicating with the city manager, as well as the council members one-on-one, if there's something that we need to be thinking of. Now, if I have a council member who's showing a very strong personality or opinion on a single subject, then I also try to make sure that the other members don't see that as a surprise when it gets voiced in the meetings. And so, just those little communication things is what I do.
Thank you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. This next question for you, Mr. Cruttsfeld, and then, Mr. Lorenzen. Oskaloosa city council meetings have, for many years, began with a prayer, usually led by a local pastor invoking a higher power. This past July, the council's agenda was set with an atheist slotted for the invocation. This caused many residents to speak out on the matter on both sides of the issue, as reported by local media. According to city code, the council agenda is set by the city manager with input from the mayor. So, what are your thoughts regarding the tradition of invocation at city council meetings, and how should the mayor handle a similar situation in the future?
Well, I could go on for several minutes with the religious doctrine behind the decision I made. There's two worlds we live in. One is religious, one is democratic, okay? Laws of man, laws of God. We open with invocation. I do that because I believe that it is incumbent upon us to ask for wisdom to come from the higher power. Now, accountants and people who are in positions of government, we calculate things. So, let's say you have an atheist who comes in and says, "I want to do your invocation." Experience tells you, this guy is looking for the opportunity to create a lawsuit, and he needs publicity in a big way, okay? If he's coming to Oskaloosa, 30-plus churches, how much traction do you really think he's going to get? So, go ahead and let him do his thing, and then let him hear crickets afterwards as to how much attention he received. The important thing, from my perspective, was to treat him with the same dignity that we do anybody else, because anything less than that opens up the city to a lawsuit as well. And so, the decision I made was one of being careful as far as our exposure to a lawsuit, but then also thinking, this guy isn't going to go anywhere. Just let him do his thing, and he'll go away.
Thank you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. Mr. Lorenzen, what are your thoughts regarding the tradition of invocation at city council meetings, and how would you, as mayor, handle a similar situation in the future?
I want to say that I, first of all, I really appreciate that our council still has a prayer before the meeting. I think that's important, and I would definitely want to continue that tradition. I watched that council meeting on YouTube in July, and I must say that, I'll admit, I felt a little uncomfortable. If you look up the invocation, the word in the dictionary, it literally just says a prayer asking God for help. And I just wonder if they could have used a different outlet to relay their message or point. But on the flip side, as Mr. Cruttsfeld was saying, as a government teacher, though, I mean, I teach the amendments. We got the First Amendment. In fact, we got a test tomorrow on all 27 amendments, and the First Amendment's obviously on there. But freedom of religion, speech, all that, and I understand the lawsuit aspect of it. So, I can understand his argument on that. It was a tough situation, and I just want to make it clear that I felt uncomfortable about it. I might have explored a different outlet, but I understand the lawsuit aspect.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. This next question for you as well. The city often has vacancies on boards and commissions. What ideas do you have to encourage residents to get involved with public service?
Well, communication will be important, let everybody know what's out there, and when you watch the meetings they have, they obviously do that. They always address the very beginning after the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, the openings that are on the commissions. You know, websites, perhaps radio, maybe newspaper, when you're out and about. If I was mayor, I would definitely let people know, especially if they brought up a topic they were interested in. If you have a strong passion for that, is that something you'd be interested in volunteering? But it takes a lot of people who run a city, the mayor, the council, the city manager, and the chamber of commerce, those are important roles, and we need citizens as well. But part of being a leader is getting other people to feel your passion and seeking those people out and communicating. So, I would just feel that that'd be a natural part of my job to promote those openings and try to get people to fill those spots, especially the ones that are qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Mr. Cruttsfeld, your thoughts?
Yeah, and a lot of it is what we're doing already, that if you pay attention to the Oskaloosa Herald from time to time, we will go ahead and put ads in there that say we have board openings. Please give some thought to that. We read them off once a month for the city council meetings. We take the time to do it that way. There's a number of speeches that the mayor also does around town. And so, when I'm talking to people who are either in college, or at the high school level, or at, in some cases, the elementary school level, what I do is try to plant that seed in their mind and say, "Hey, you know what? If you would think that what I'm doing is interesting, there's a ladder you want to climb to get there." And so, it starts off with being in the boards and commissions and getting some experience. How would you like to get on planning and zoning and actually, you know, have a hand in the way that the city grows? You would be the first person informed of the changes that are happening in the city, and you actually have an opinion and influence over the way that that's going to go. How's that sound to you? Usually, that's enough to get a good conversation going, but it's always keeping an open mind, knowing that we are looking. And with all of the rental inspection controversy there was, we're still looking for the two people to represent landlords and renters on our Board of Adjustment. So, we continue to work at it, but it is difficult. People are busy.
Thank you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. This next question for you as well. The Wall Street Journal featured Oskaloosa in an article that published this year in June. The Journal wrote about how young people are leaving rural communities for urban centers, and that this trend will impact the amount of skilled workers available to fill rural job openings. What ideas do you have to attract and retain young people in Oskaloosa?
Well, a couple of them come to mind. First of all, it's supporting the local businesses that are trying to grow, that as they recruit people in, they need to be able to give a compelling reason as to why those employees should stay, or come to Oskaloosa in this case. Now, I'm also involved with the Regional Workforce Development Board, which is out of the Indian Hills area. It's a 10-county area. And what we do is we work on employment issues for the 10-county area, trying to keep our young people here in the area. One of the biggest problems we have is that they're going to school at Indian Hills, they're learning how to do computer programming, and they're being recruited out at Silicon Valley. And the not funny joke is that the number-one export coming out of southern Iowa is our children. Now, as far as keeping the, you know, our own people here, supporting business is good. And I think just driving home the point that even if you do leave, let's say you're like my kids, and, you know, they're headed off to the larger cities, you know, they're going to remember what their childhood was like in Oskaloosa. So, what about that square? What about the living up, or growing up experience that you had as a kid in the school system? Wouldn't you want that for your child, as opposed to what you were facing in Minneapolis or in Cedar Rapids, in Des Moines? So, those are the things that are on my mind as far as being able to keep talent here.
Thank you, Mr. Cruttsfeld. Mr. Lorenzen, your thoughts on how to attract and retain young people in Oskaloosa?
I think you had a really good answer. I mean, definitely starts with supporting the businesses we have in place and investing in our community. You know, we have a great downtown area, we have a lot of great things going. I think we're heading in the right direction. This town does offer a lot. But, you know, things are changing all the time, and those are things we'd have to address as a council and brainstorm ideas. I mean, if you come up with various ideas as a group, that's what you want to explore, whether it's artistic centers, green and open spaces, continue with ideas like the rec trail and, you know, disc golf and, you know, things like that. I mean, our community is great. I think it's kind of a natural thing. Mr. Walling, I believe, addressed it when he mentioned that, you know, small towns are a little bit of a stepping stone. That's something that happens, and some people come here and leave, or they'll start off here, but, you know, I think they're going to come back, and I think we've got a great town, and we're heading in the right direction. I mean, just developing the rec, early childhood development center, things like that would be essential.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Now, this final question for the night goes to you first. What initiatives or projects do you believe are most important to improving residents' quality of life?
See, the quality of life is something that's really connected to economic development as well. Those two go hand-in-hand. When you've got one, you often get the other one. So, I think it's important to, like I kind of actually just mentioned, go along with the idea of the rec trail, of the childhood development center. One big thing that's coming in a lot of cities is the idea of green and open spaces, areas where people can either hang out or take their dog, like the dog park. Also, when you have green and open spaces, it increases air and water quality. We have a good library, maybe some more artistic centers. I mean, that one started, is very impressive. I think more of that. I think more of that. Aesthetic improvements, we're on the right page with that. The Blue Zone, I think, is something that was important. We've got more sidewalks than ever. We have a wonderful hospital. Continue investing in the things we have and I think, I think we're definitely heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Mr. Kretzfeld?
Well, you know, you were asking about the important things that I think we need and so, yeah, we're doing a number of those things now. The city council has, in my opinion, done some very clear thinking as far as what are the right things for the, for the enjoyment of life in Oskaloosa. I was thinking back to last week when we were in Fort Madison doing our presentation to the Iowa DOT, that, you know, we've got the environmental job done now for the bypass going around Oskaloosa. And we were talking about the accident statistics and just all the changes that need to happen in order for Highway 63 to be a safer road. My job was to come in with a second line, that it didn't have anything to do with the accident statistics. Instead, it had to do with diverting the truck traffic around Oskaloosa so that we can be a friendlier place to our own people. And so I talked about the alley. I talked about the downtown square. I talked about how people like to get together and congregate. I talk about the dirty looks that people give to the trucks that drive through during the National Anthem. And, you know, nobody wants that to happen. And the name of the trucking company is right on the door of that truck. So he knows that everybody's mad at him and he didn't mean to. So as far as I'm concerned, working on some of these future initiatives is also going to help quite a bit.
Thank you, Mr. Kretzfeld. Now we'll hear closing comments. Mr. Lorenzen, you can go first with 90 seconds.
Thank you. You know, I don't have a degree in financing, but I have a lot of common sense and my math skills are really good. And I've been stretching a dollar bill my whole life. I have a love for the city of Oskaloosa. I'm invested in this community in so many ways. If I was fortunate enough to represent this great town, I promise I would represent it well. I promise I'd focus on infrastructure, support businesses, and be fiscally responsible. When a new challenger beats an incumbent, it's almost never because people feel that he knows or she knows more than the current mayor at that moment. It's usually one of three things. Either they believe in that candidate, or they have a direct connection with that candidate, or maybe they just want change. And I hope that I can represent one of those three scenarios for many people out there. I want to thank you for coming out and I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenzen. Mr. Kretzfeld?
Now, once again, thank you to the Oskaloosa Herald, the KMZN, KBOE, the NoCoast Network, Penn Central Mall, the CRI folks for doing the filming of this. And I understand that it's going to be rebroadcast later, so MCG, thank you as well. As I said in the beginning, Oskaloosa has a lot of big things going on. And I believe I'm the best candidate for mayor by virtue of the years of effort that I've spent getting us here. City issues, whether they be quality of life or financial, it might be infrastructure or budgeting, these are all problems that I've dealt with many times before. Voters can take comfort in knowing that there's deep experience in everything that